Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's five o'clock on Monday, January the 8th, 2024. Welcome to the organizational meeting of District 882. Please join us to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their which it stands, a nation, under God, indivisible, as a great and just as one.
As we progress through our agenda, I'd like to just make a little announcement or a little comment that this meeting is a little bit different than our regular meetings. This is called an organizational meeting and is prescribed by statute, and it follows a little bit of a different rhythm and pace than our regular meetings do. We do it once a year, and it's always the first Monday in January. So having said that, we do have a tentative agenda in front of board members, and we need to make a motion to approve the agenda. Moved to approve the agenda by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Now we move into organization of the Board. Every year, once a year, we elect Board Officers to serve for a term of one year. Any member of the Board may nominate any other Board Member, including themselves, and nominations do not require a second. All positions require three calls for nominations before closing out the nomination process. If a single nomination is made, the Board Chair will announce election by acclamation. If there are multiple nominations, a vote is required. So as the acting chairperson, I am going to call for the election of the Chair.
I would like to nominate Kathy Zebarth for Chair.
We have Kathy Zebarth elected, or nominated, for Chair. Is there other nomination? Are you sure? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Kathy Zebarth as Board Chair for 2024, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving into the election of the Vice Chair and the Treasurer, nominations are open.
I would like to nominate Jeff Hagley for Vice Chair.
Jeff Hagley has been nominated for Vice Chair. Are there any additional nominations?
I'd nominate Jamie Seaborn for Vice Chair.
Jamie Seaborn has been nominated for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations?
Respectfully, I request not to be nominated for Vice Chair.
Jeff Hagley is declining his nomination. Are we on? We have one nomination for Vice Chair, Jamie Seaborn. Is there any additional nominations? Nominations are now closed. All those in favor of Jamie Seaborn for Vice Chair, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Now we're going to move to the election of the Chair, of the Clerk, I'm sorry. We have changed the title by recommendation of MSBA. We used to call it Secretary Clerk. It's now just being called Clerk. So nominations are open for the position of Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Casey Root.
Casey Root has been nominated for Clerk. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Melissa Curtis.
Melissa Curtis has been nominated for Clerk. Are there any additional nominations? Nominations are now closed. All those in favor of Melissa, I'm sorry, Casey Root for Clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. No, that's not how we do that. I'm sorry. I just screwed that up. That's why I have a parliamentarian.
So now he would just move on to the next one.
Then, all those in favor of Melissa Curtis for Clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. There's not the opposed. We have one vote for Casey Root. We have five votes for Melissa Curtis. Melissa Curtis is elected. I'm sorry, I screwed that up. I'm not a parliamentarian. So now we move to the easier issues. Moving ahead, we have to designate our official newspaper once per year. This is a statutory requirement, and we're designating the Monticello Times to be our official newspaper for 2024. Is there any discussion from the Board on that? I guess I just moved it. I believe, we need a second. Seconded by Jeff Hagley. All those in favor of the Monticello Times as our official newspaper for 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving down to E, designation of School Board Committee Assignments. We have a rather lengthy list of assignments and committees and liaison roles that each member of the Board takes as they, as we divide up our duties. That list is attached here. There is no substantial change in it from last year, except for the legislative liaison. We're adding a second position because Casey Root was also elected as a delegate to MSBA. So we can move the committee assignments as listed, and I'm open to a motion for that, unless there's any further discussion. Does anybody want to make any changes in assignments? Okay.
All moved.
Moved by Casey Root.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of the committee assignments as posted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Committee assignments will be posted. Pass six-zero. Moving down to our designation of official district depositories. Tina Burkeholder from the Business Office is available if we have any questions on this. These are the businesses' Core Trust, Wells Fargo, US Bank, Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, PMA Financial Network, Inc., Remmer, and Mid-America. There's been no changes since last year. Is that correct? Does anyone have any discussion or questions on our depositories for Tina? Okay, so I need a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Jeff Hagley. All those in favor of the designation of the following official district depositories, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the district depositories are passed six-and-o. Moving on to our official meeting night for the third Monday of every month at 6:00 PM in the middle school boardroom, which is where we are right now. Work sessions will be held the first Monday of each month, beginning at 5:00 PM in the middle school boardroom, and those are open to the public as well. In the event that a work session or a regular board meeting is canceled due to unseen circumstances such as weather, or just anything that could cause a cancellation, the meeting will be rescheduled for the following day at the same time. We're noticing this in advance, in advice, under the advice of MSBA, to post this once a year. That way, if there was a cancellation for weather or other unforeseen circumstances, we don't have to post it and wait another three days to hold the meeting. The second meeting of the month is not listed on there.
When you talked about work sessions.
You're both in there. First two sentences.
Second sentence.
Okay.
It just lists the third Monday first, and then it says the first Monday second.
Okay, very good. So this is an action item.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of the meeting schedule for 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. And we, just to backtrack on that a little bit, about a month ago, we actually went through and looked at all of the dates and made sure that we were in compliance with state laws for elections and dates that we're not allowed to have meetings on, and that will be posted for the year for the schedule. So now we have a motion to participate in our federally funded programs, and Superintendent Olson is going to discuss that.
Yeah, so programs like Title I, any other programs that come that are from federal resources, we need a motion to participate in those ahead of time, and I bring that forward.
So moved.
Second.
By Jamie Seaborn, seconded by Casey Root, to participate in the federally funded programs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving into our legal counsel and authorized contacts. Once a year, we must designate who the legal counsel for the district is, and this is John Edison of Squires, Waldsberger, and Mace. Do you want to discuss anything further about that, Superintendent Olson?
This is a firm that we've been with for many years. They have changed some of their partners, but same firm that we've been with for, I've been here, I've been here nineteen years, so.
So we need a motion to continue our legal counsel with Squires, Waldsberger, and Mace.
So moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Now we move to who are the individuals who are authorized to contact our legal counsel. So not just anyone that's in the district can pick up the phone and call our authorized legal counsel. So those individuals are Eric Olson, Superintendent, Tina Burkeholder, Director of Business Services, Rob Daniker, Human Resource Director, Kathy Zebarth, Board Chair, and John Weekly, Director of Special Education. Is there any further discussion about this? These are statutory, statutory authorized contacts as well, so. Action item.
So moved.
Moved by Casey Root.
Seconded.
Seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. So now we have the designation of authorized personnel to enter into contractual agreements with our district, and that would be Superintendent Olson, Tina Burkeholder, Director of Business Services, and Rob Daniker, Human Director, Human Resource Director. This is an action item as well.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jamie Seaborn, seconded by Jeff Hagley. All those in favor of our contractual agreements, designated personnel, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving on to item L, the designation of our authorized signatures to be accepted by the depositories. That would be the chairperson, the Vice Chair, Treasurer, Secretary Clerk, Tina Burkeholder, Director of Business Services, Amy Stalback, the Controller, and Cindy Brenney, our Accountant. Do you have any further discussion about that, Superintendent Olson? Okay, this is likewise something we need to move.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving into M, the designation of our authorized personnel to make electronic wire transfers. Superintendent Olson, Director of Business Services, Tina Burkeholder, Zach Harry, HR Manager, Tom Kikhafer, Payroll Specialist, and Amy Stalbacker, Stalback, our Controller. Any additional discussion about that? Okay, this is a motion item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Next, we have a resolution to approve the annual designation of the identified official with authority for MDE external user access.
Minnesota Department of Education Professional Educated Licensing Standards Board and Office of Higher Education require annual designation of an identified official with authority for each local educational agency that uses the education identity access management system. Identified official with authority is responsible for authorizing review and recertifying user access for their local educational agency in accordance with the State of Minnesota Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all other, all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will authorize user access to state and Minnesota education secure systems in accordance with users' assigned job duties, and will revoke that user's access when there's no longer needed. School Board equivalent governing body must designate an identified official with authority to authorize user access to state and Minnesota secure websites for your organization. A EDIEM Board Resolution must be completed within the Minnesota Department of Education annually anytime there's a change in the assignment of the identified official authority.
Need a second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of approving Superintendent Olson for the external user access recertification system, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving on to O, this is something that's specific to our district, but we have decided to, for the second year, identify an official parliamentarian, because I need a lot of help with Robert rules. And so we have decided to identify Devany Moore, our Communication Specialist and Board Liaison, as our official parliamentarian for Monticello School Board.
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Congratulations, Devany. You have a big job. Moving on to our combined polling place resolution. So some of you might remember that we just did this in December. There is a law that says you have to do it by December 31st, but it doesn't have to be done in the month of December. And the guidance that we've received from MSBA is that they believe we should do the identification of our combined polling places as early as possible in the calendar year, so that we don't incur any additional fees if there would be a special election or anything to come up from that. So even though we just did it in December, we're going to do it again this date during the organizational meeting, and then each year successively at the organizational meeting, the combined polling places will be identified. So we have a resolution for that.
Be resolved by the School Board of Independence District, two, State of Minnesota's follows, one pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections. Are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of a school district, which has been established by the cities or towns, located in a whole or in part within the school district? The Board hereby confirms these precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Two pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A.11, the Board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections, not held on the day of a statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that's been designated by the county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the specific all school district special, and generally elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. Combined polling place, Monticello, 505 Walnut Street, Monticello, Minnesota, 55362. This combined polling place serves all territories in independent schools, number 882, located in record township, Big Lake City, Big Lake Township, Buffalo Township, Clearwater Township, Maple Lake Township, Monticello and Monticello, at Seago and Silver Creek Township, all in Wright County, Minnesota. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A.09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the same day as statewide elections, in the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. As required by Minnesota Statutes 204B.16 subdivision A, the Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of new polling place locations to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the school district whose school district polling place location has been changed. Notice must be a non-foreable notice, not at least twenty-five days before the date of the first election, which it will apply. A notice that is undeliverable must be forwarded immediately to the appropriate county auditor, who shall change registration status to challenged in statewide registration.
Second.
Seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of the resolution for our combined polling places, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving into our consent agenda, members received the previous minutes and the personnel matters last week and had opportunity to ask questions. This is a consent agenda item.
So moved.
Moved by Melissa Curtis.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as posted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Moving on to collaborative connections, we have a resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations from Superintendent Olson.
What we'll discuss to bring forward will be wonderful donations, and they are all going to our Monticello Middle School STEM Lab. The first one is from Bondis Corporation, screwdrivers, pliers, L wrenches, fold-ups, and screwdriver racks. Cargill is bringing forth $2,695, and the Haas family, $200 to our Monticello STEM Lab. So as we are all aware, the STEM is getting quite a facelift the last two years, and its facelift is being led by Ms. Kradowski and Ms. Munz, and they're doing a great job of bringing forth something in the state of Minnesota that we are still the only one that has the really hands-on modules that we have there, that are really life-experienced, full of life experiences, like hanging pictures and fixing doorknobs, and then things like drones, and really, the medical field is highly represented, and just the amount of hands-on opportunities that our kids get to touch and learn, but then apply writing and imply the learning and the knowledge that they're gaining into this experience is something that we're very, very proud of. So we've heard from them twice in the last year, and John, we're going to keep making this a class that gives kids an opportunity to look forward in their lives, and I think we're all really proud. And I talk about it here because all three are coming forward to that, to the one location, all three donations coming forward to one spot, so, pretty cool.
I'd like to add to that, that our program is so unique that they were selected for the showcase of excellence at the MSBA Leadership Conference at the Convention Center this weekend, where there will be about 2,500 people in attendance. So that's a very big amount of exposure for our program, very unique in the state, and I think they're getting visits from other schools that are interested in starting something similar, so. So we have a resolution for the gifts.
They're to be resolved by Monticello School Board, number 882, to gratefully accept upon donations from Bondis Corporation for screwdrivers, pliers, L wrenches, fold-ups, and screwdriver racks, for the MMS STEM Lab, from Cargill for the $2,695 for the MMS STEM Lab, and from the Haas family for $20 for the MMS STEM Lab.
Second.
Seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And thank you very much to our, the vote passes six-zero, and thank you very much to the donors for our educational program for our kid, middle school level. That's extremely generous. Moving into number seven, our safe and healthy culture, we have Terry Woodworth, our Director of Building and Grounds, here to give us a briefing on a roof project update. Welcome to the podium. Thanks for coming, Terry.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Superintendent Olson and Board, for giving us a couple minutes here to discuss this summer's project. You know, it became pretty clear right away when I started that we had to come up with a game plan for our, you know, our building envelopes here in the district. Anytime it rained, you know, all the head guys were calling me, "Who do we call? This thing's been leaking for years." You know, so it gave me an opportunity to reach out to someone that I've worked with in the past. So Ryan here, I have invited Ryan here, Senior Field Advisor with Tremco Roofing and Building Solutions, to come out and discuss summer's roofing project at Monticello Senior High that we were, so. Ryan?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Nice to see everybody. Yeah, I've engaged with Terry in the past at Oseo some years, and he contacted me when he was hired by the district as part of, like, we'd like to get a building envelope plan in place. And so we started with some initial assessments district-wide, looking at not just the roof, but the building envelope. And what we uncovered was there was about 20 chronic leaks throughout the district, split about half and half between facade and rough. Okay, and so the time of year it was, getting into fall and heading into winter, what we wanted to do, based on some funds that were available for this next summer, was to look at what's the most urgent need after we did this initial assessment, interviews with all the staff at each site, you know, finding out, hey, where were these leaks? What were the problems? Like, how long have they been going on? Things like that. And then identify what was the most urgent need, immediate need, and build a project around that, then with a goal of developing a long-term plan for the district that we're doing concurrently with the development of this project. The long-term plan will be ready, you know, sometime fall, summer of, spring, summer of next year, of this coming year of 2024, and we just bid out the project, the roofing project a few weeks ago, roofing and facade project. And so, a little history about myself, I've been doing commercial roofing for, oh, since I was 21. And been done everything there can be, from a journeyman architectural sheet metal worker to a journeyman rougher to facade installations and inspections. And so this is just, I've been doing what I do for about 15 years now, and we work with about 50 districts in the state of Minnesota. And this is our, one of our first forays with Monticello, and so, and like I say, Terry's the one that brought us in, just based on our past history and experience and recommendations he'd received. So a little, I basically can move to the next slide. I've ever used an iPad for one of these. It's pretty slick. So, in September, Tremco conducted district-wide roofing. Some of this will be a repeat, facade assessments. The goal was to prioritize immediate need and to start the development of a long-term plan to address all roofing and facade-related preventative maintenance and replacement needs. At the time, there were 20-plus active leaks in the district, with approximately half being related to roofing and the other half facade. Considerable structural cracking was observed at the high school precast wall panels, along with chronic leaking over the kitchen roof. These areas were determined as having the most immediate need and were the basis of this year's project scope. The balance of the district's inspections, site interviews, and initial preventative maintenance have been completed. All these items are being used to further develop an updated long-term plan. This aerial here kind of identifies the major areas of work that are in this year's scope with all the red lines identified, precast wall panels, with the, I apologize, but yellow is some additional facade item at the main entrance. This, maybe also yellow, or, that's the kitchen roof. And so those are the areas that we have identified as being the greatest need in the district, and particularly around this building, having leaks that have been unaddressed for years, and just obviously over the kitchen, which is an extremely busy roof, possibly very sensitive underneath. So that's what was built into this year's project scope. This is a general summary of the scope of the project. The precast, we are doing epoxy. And so what's going on is you need, we see it every once in a while with, like, a tip-up precast panel. For some reason, it's not completely, probably a manufacturing defect whenever the building was built, but you have actual cracks. So, no, we have a few photos, which we'll share, that, you know, it cracks and extend through the precast panels, and the only way to fix them without replacing panels, which is, let's take, an epoxy infection. So cracks in vertical precast facade panels will be repaired by first, the crack with a wire brush installing protection ports. Epoxy buttering material will be installed over the existing cracks, around the ports. The ports will then be injected with epoxy, and then the precast patching, shift. The ports will then be injected with epoxy, and then the precast patching, shift all, pension ball concrete will be ground down, determine the units of, limits of deterioration. Chipping hammers will be used to remove the block, back to solid concrete or to a maximum depth of two inches. After the areas have been chipped, the steel will be cleaned to remove the rust that the reinforcing steel in the precast panels. Remove the rust and then coat with the rust inhibitor, under bonding agent, these areas will then be hand patched back with our check. Remove existing sealant, precast panel sealant replacement, remove existing sealant, lightly grind the joint edges to remove the loose residual sealant, place a new silicone sealant. Precast wall coating, concrete surfaces should be cleaned using a high-pressure washer, post with two coats of clear last for coating, the coating will be scrubbed in, brushed across the body into the substrate. This is at the south curtain walls, which I'll have a few pictures of, too. Complete existing window glazing, apply new silicone sealant, remove existing stone or window perimeter sealant, lightly grind the joint edges to remove residual sealant. So that's all the facade, that's the general facade scope, obviously, it's much more in-depth than that. The big, the big thing will be the precast wall coating, which Terry and I have talked about from a visual standpoint. Right now, the walls are like a natural color, and so well, the option, I think the most permanent thing that won't require any future coating is a clear finish over the top, but the only problem that is, you will still see the crack repair, because there's no way to match it perfectly. Option to hide that is to do like a breathable coating over that, that, over the years, that could require additional maintenance to maintain that look. So, there are already cracks there, and if the district can live with the, look at the cracks, that would be our recommendation, be to use the clear. Roof replacement, roof existing rock ballast and EPM roof, reuse existing three-and-a-half-inch Alapali assistant insulation. Typically, we want to try to bring, add additional R-value to bring the building up to the state of Minnesota code. On this particular roof, with all the mechanic penetration, some existing ductwork that has to be removed, and some curb height limitations, we have to stick with this current. Mechanically attach new wood fiber coverboard, install second layer of wood fiber coverboard and foam mopping, some hot asphalt, and install a multi-ply assembly with gravel surface. So that's the general project scope. It's entirety, obviously, once again, it's much more detailed than that. This goes over the roof design in general. We do all types of roof design. This particular one was chosen because of our history at, what we use at Oseo and our success with it, but also that is the primary access point for the whole building, it's getting, once you're getting onto the roof. So you need something that withstands foot traffic extremely well and can be durable when you're servicing equipment up on the kitchen roof, air handlers, things like that. So you just have multiple applies of membrane that is coated with a rock that's embedded into asphalt, so it can, you can walk all over it for 20, 30, 40 years, and there won't be any impact to the integrity of the roof assembly. That's the general roof assembly. I will go, get to a few pictures. Now, this is the roof area in question, and as you can see, there's been, over the, there's been constant and continuous leak repair attempts on the roof. You can evidence by shoveling a rock and, and making pathways to drains. And, and then you can see how busy the roof is also, lots of equipment to deal with and roof around, particularly in this back part where you have your main air handling unit. Like, this entire piece of ductwork needs to be disconnected, removed, roofed underneath. And this, this masonry wall will be covered in metal to eliminate longstanding staining, low flashing height concerns. This wall will be covered in metal panels, this ductwork will be reinstalled once the metal panels are on and the roof is roofed. So, an area that is, been a long-term concern and a problem, we're just going to eliminate that from any future long-term concerns by raising flashing heights, putting metal over the masonry. And we're doing metal here because this masonry is never going to be seen. You can't see it from the road, you can't see, we're not changing the look of the building. Assembly. Up here, you can see some of the cracking that's been associated with the precast, and we have pictures in there. There's some low flashing heights at door thresholds to deal with, that door has to be cut off, like that. So, once again, it's not, this is about a, I would say approximately half of our value standpoint. We'll get into some precast stuff. Here, you can see cracking, consistent cracking throughout the precast, the precast panels. This is, this is just a joint sealant. Here's additional cracking below a scupper. And this is the curtain wall to be cleaned, resealed. You can see there's been chronic water intrusion at these aluminum window frames that manifest itself into the facade of those, of those entryways. Is that an entry? Am I correct in saying entryway?
Yep.
So that's all going to be cleaned, resealed, ground all the windows, all the vertical joints, and then a clear sealer installed over that. Not only will it improve the performance and allow it, those curtain walls to perform longer, it'll vastly improve the aesthetics there.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
You just had a question about that curtain wall being an entryway?
Yeah.
Excuse me, that's a south wall, is that correct?
You know what, I, I, my directions up, up in this district are not, are not great yet, but it would be, it's this, it's this area here.
Yeah.
That'd be south.
That's not an entry, is it? We don't have.
See it from the road.
Yeah, that's, this is viewable from the road.
It was supposed to be like a, like a solarium or something when they first built it.
All the entries are from the east and the west, right? That's where all the foot traffic comes in on the sidewalks there?
I don't think there is a door.
That's just, that's just a curtain wall?
Yeah.
There, okay.
Not an entry.
Anyhow, back to your question, sir.
I just want to make sure we were talking about the same thing.
Oh, I apologize. You know what? Yeah, I, as we, when I'm looking at buildings, I'm looking at, like, the problems. A lot of times, I'll, like, someone will walk me through the building and get up on the roof or somewhere out, and I, there's no chance of me ever getting out of that building again, because I just don't pay attention. And so I apologize, but, yeah, so that's, the area that correlates there is this on the, on the building here. So, yeah. Does that, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so the goal is to, you can see all this, all this cracking that occurs, this is cracking that should never occur in a structural precast panel, and the goal long-term is, if these cracks are not properly addressed, water continues to get to those, and those make them worse, and then we, potential structural, and the beauty of that epoxy injection, it creates a structure right there, and it doesn't just seal it, it raises, and then, once you got all these, and then these joints, this is just failed sealant. After years, after X amount of years, it's to be replaced, so that's will all be replaced. Moving on, here's our bid package items. Bidders have bid on it, bid results, I'm assuming you guys have all seen that, or over depth, but these are the bid package items.
I had a question on the clarification for unit prices.
Yep.
Five, one is seven, one is 4.65.
Yep.
Do you provide some clarity on that?
Oh, all that is, is, all that is, is a unit cost for period wood blocking. So let's say you break some apart, buy some rotten wood, it's just, like, this is a number that at the end of the job might be perfect. So that's a very minor item of things. We always want unit prices in any bid package, so that if they do find something that's not, that you can't, under, you can't uncover during the normal process of designing and planning, they don't have a, contractors don't have an open checkbook.
Then on the working days?
Yeah.
There's a, days, one is 40, a hundred in the bids, and the dollar marks are quite different.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm guessing they were going to plan to double up on the project?
Okay.
You know? And, and consequently, that might be why their number was where it was, because of, hey, we need to get two crews on it, you know?
Yeah, I guess where I'm coming at is, is the size of the project, is that typical for the number of days for the size of the project?
I would say when, what we require when they start a project is, they have to be there from the time they start the project to the time they finish, no pulling off and stopping and starting. And there's no, been no official project schedule that's submitted yet. So this 90 days, what it really represents is, you know, a lot of working days of, what will happen is, once we get into the scheduling phase of it, I would say it's more like a six-week project, and so whatever working days that comes out to you, whether, it's more likely, more, more or less going to be a six-week.
Oh, yeah, that's when they'll submit.
Yeah.
Because I think we were thinking about doing spring, precast walls, kind of doing some things while school was going on.
Yes, thank you, Terry. So what the goal, kind of, I think the goal is to start up some of the stuff that does not impact the learning environment, some of the wall repairs, because they are adjacent to the replacement areas, some of, some of them are. And they're doing, completing those wall repairs ahead of the roofing project will allow those people not to be stepping on each other. Wall repairs, once again, the wall repairs will not impact the learning environment. Sooner we can get to some of this stuff, the better, you know? We just did some mock-up, we did a mock-up at Pinewood on some curtain walls, with walls and curtain walls, windows and curtain walls that had been leaking for, forever. As far, as far as we could tell from the interviews with the people, and so we had to pull up the old, old blueprints, old drawings, and see how the wall was constructed, we did a mock-up at the two worst windows, it's an entire wall that needs ultimately to be repaired. We did the two worst windows, and I believe we've been successful in stopping those leaks. And so, that's another site where we've identified a problem, but it just, we don't, we weren't as concerned there as we were with the structural work here, that was necessary.
I have a quick question. How long, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but how long would you predict that these repairs would be good, would hold?
Oh, these structural, oh, this, they'll be 20-plus years.
Is there a guarantee?
The roof will have a 30-year warranty. Facade repairs are not, it's not the type of thing, they're, they're typically, like, they don't come with like a manufacturer's warranty, because it's more, facade is almost 100% labor, a labor-based situation. So, but any, any facade project, you really, what you got to look at is the longevity of the material being used and how that holds up, and that is also going to determine the length of the repair, which is why, for some facade projects, doing mock-ups and identifying solutions and doing, completing destructive testing, so much more critical than on a roofing project. You know, it's more quantifiable, and we have warranties that cover all that, and it's much more, but very often with facade projects, the leaks have been chronic and ongoing, which we're dealing with here, and uncovering the real problem, or the core problem, is the most difficult part, and.
It may lead to another problem.
What's that?
It may lead to another problem underneath.
That's exactly what, that's what was going on at Pinewood, like, there, there was some sealant replacement been attempted, but that never really addressed the problem, so there was multiple things happening, and so, that had probably never, what we've determined was, I think what it was, was the mortar bed used on the pre. I don't need to get into, but there's a, the mortar bed is, there's a mortar in between two different surfaces, right? And it's supposed to go to a certain depth, and when we ground that out during the mock-up, the mortar bed was very shallow, and it had never been, since that building was built, it was never proper. During construction, it had never been, it was never done properly during construction, and no one caught it, and so consequently, we luckily were able to correct that as part of this, but, to get back to your original question, that type of work is just not, there's nobody out there to warrant it, if that makes sense. Whoever makes this little bead of caulk that goes in, there's not going to come $10 to the caulk, if that makes sense. So, sometimes we'll have a five-year manufact, like, installer's warranty, something like that, but most of the people we work with, we've worked with long-term and really trusted, and if there's a problem, they're going to come back and address it.
Thank you.
On the, on the precast patching?
Yeah.
Chipping hammers will be used to remove the deteriorated concrete back to solid concrete, or a maximum depth of two inches. What's the plan if you reach two inches and you don't have solid concrete?
Oh, there will be, because those precast panels are going to, they'll have, typically that topping layer that you're going, so there'll be precast, and there, there's foam insulation, and then there's precast. So you'll, we will get to.
That's what I was wondering, that's what I was wondering on there, is the thickness of it.
Yeah, we'll get to solid concrete within that. And the reason they won't, we won't go deeper than two inches is that structure, that two inches is enough to generate that structural bond?
Yep.
Right? And if you're going deeper than that, then you worry about the integrity of, you know?
I want to make sure on that.
Yep. So I, I got to admit, I was a little in the dark about how deep we were going with anything here today, with Terry being new here and us being newer into the district. So we will have a complete, it'll probably be a 400-page report when we're all said and done, and we'll be happy to share that with Terry, and if I, if, if you all would like me to come back at some point and, like, go through this in more detail, or maybe at a facilities meeting, meeting to go through in more detail exactly what we found. Like, the middle school, we have a bunch of glass block, but where's that over? Is that over a gymnasium?
It's over there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, oh, right there, yeah. I mean, we're at the middle school. There's, there's a glass block wall that's been leaking for years, and so what we're, what we're talking through there, that's another item that there's, there's no temporary solution. So unfortunately, some of these items, facility people just have to live with until we can do the permanent repair, but there it is, try to fix that wall, or do we cover it in metal? And if we cover it in metal, then we have to have a solution for the lighting in that area, some LEDs or something like that, you know? So those are some of the long-term things we're working through right now, as we put together a plan. This is just propaganda. And this is our primary team members in the state, and then we have, underneath, we have a, we have about 20, we have 20-plus people in the state that inspect and work and do all these things, but it's primarily Brandon and I, and he's my right-hand man, so. That's all I have for you. Any, any questions?
Any, any other discussion from the board?
I have questions, so. How did we end up with Tremco and not another company? I'm sure your company's great and everything, I just want to make sure.
Do you want me to answer that, or are you looking?
Oh, no, it's just, how did, how did we end up with one company? I just want to make sure that we went through the process.
Like I said, I came from Oseo, and, and Oseo had been using, you know, Tremco services for years, and had a lot of great success, and we kind of had, kind of like, you know, Ryan was talking about, you know, we have had chronic leaks here for years that have been going on, that have never been, you know, properly addressed, so we, you know, trying to take my knowledge and, and take what was working great in other districts and, and bring it here for innovation, and, yeah, to move us, so, yeah.
And maybe to dovetail off of that, it's kind of an interesting thing, because you're right, like, where do we, how do we get to where we're at, right? So, I started doing this years ago, after being a grunt in the field, after being a laborer and, and working my way through the chain of command within different roofing and facade companies. And as a person's doing that, I saw things, I, I saw the things that got done wrong, and no one ever did anything about it, things I didn't want to see done a certain way. And that just developed our philosophy and methodology with how we approach projects. Just up on the middle school, Terry, I had this discussion before the meeting, I have to be careful sometimes about when I say things in a district because of, I don't, I'm not looking to offend anybody, I just, I'm very black and white, I'm analytical when it comes to these things. We have, there was a mechanical project done four or five years ago here, six, I don't know when.
Seven.
The mechanical project?
Yeah, and, and who's the maintenance person here?
Dave.
Dave.
Yeah.
Dave, we looked at this ductwork, and I asked him, and he goes, oh, yeah, that, that leaked since the day we installed it, and it didn't stop leaking until I went inside there and caulked it myself. And exactly what he said is so typical in so many K through 12 districts, where you get little, these little piecemeal things that nobody touches. So very often, the roofing is all that's ever discussed, and you guys have been paying some, a rougher, I don't, doesn't matter, doesn't matter who it is, you're paying somebody to come out and fix a leak, they've been fixing and fixing and fixing the same leaks, and it's not even what was leaking, right? So we were looking at this holistic control, it's about a building envelope methodology, and that's where we've tried to be different from a typical roof consultant, looking at how we're really addressing the whole building envelope, because that's really what impacts the longevity of building and the learning environment, is handling those things all at once, which is kind of a unique, we've tried to bring to the table, which is, I think, why we've had success at Oseo and a lot of the other districts.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Going back to the facade walls, you were talking about the cracks that are in those, and you'd previously referenced the, that south curtain wall?
Yeah.
And what that might look like if you use your recommended clear application?
Oh, okay.
Are, is that going to be the same approach?
Two different things. I apologize.
Okay.
So when I talked about the coating product, that was for the precast walls. The curtain wall will be, still be the original color. It'll probably just be cleaned. So whatever, whatever color that currently is, once you get all the organic material off of it, it'll be, maintain that color, and that'll just be a clear sealant as put on there. We're not looking to change that color, unless we wanted to change the color. Might, did that answer your question?
I, I think the thing I care about the most, I mean, I drive by there all the time, and I look at that, and it's, it's ugly.
Yep.
And I think we want it to be beautiful.
That one?
Yeah, that bottom left corner.
Talking about here, correct?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is that something that's going to look consistent across there? We're not going to see the discoloration or the cracks going forward?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We return to its, all right, now, the only. We return to its, all right, now, the only caveat I would have there would be, for some reason, the staining is so bad that you can't get it all removed, then we probably have to have a conversation about, do we, do we need to color it to make it consistent?
Yeah, we do.
Right, no, right, but I anticipate being able to get it all removed.
Thank you.
So this is just the front facade right there on the.
Yeah.
Precast side, so there's water that's coming down, are we addressing anything with the water itself?
Well, yeah, so what happens is you got, you have these drainage channels that are built into these windows, and as those come out.
So it's going to return, is what I'm getting at, eventually, it's going to return.
So there'll be two things, there, there's going to be some sealant replacement, silicone seal replacement done, it'll help limit being water that comes out of there and with the organic, comes out there, but also the sealer that gets put on there will also help with that.
Okay, okay.
And that's something that, like if it would have prob, I'm getting guessed, if we would have looked at this, I don't know how long it's been like that.
Long time.
But it's something with like regular cleaning and, and some regular general PM, probably would have never gotten to that. So, just one of those things where it's like, every year we'll, we typically will have a list of, here's your preventive maintenance items, your minor PM items that we can address, and by doing these, eliminate longer-term headaches down the road like that.
Any additional discussion by the board? Questions for our guest? Okay, thank you very much for coming, and Terry, we'll look forward to hearing an update on this project as it along.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Ryan. Have a great night. Yep, thanks, Terry. Thanks, Ryan.
Next, we move into our policy section, and we're going to welcome Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources, to the podium to discuss first reading and second reading of policies.
Sorry about that. Chair Zebreth, Board Members, Superintendent Olson, thank you. So this evening, we have the first reading of several policies. All of these policies have in common for first reading tonight, that they are required annual re, um, reviews, and so we are taking kind of a deep dive into most of these tonight to, because it has been some time since it's had an opportunity to review these particular policies. And that I did share with the board at our recent policy meeting, that next month likely be having a slate of similar, um, policies that require annual review. Uh, the first policy for review tonight is, uh, number 413, harassment and violence. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a learning and working environment free from harassment and violence on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, age, marital status, familial status, status with regard to public assistance, sexual orientation or disability, i.e. protected classes. There is a form that goes with this one for reporting, and so any member of our district community, employee, student, and also a community member could use that to report harassment or violence that's occurring within the district. Chair Zebreth, would you like me to pause after each one, or would you like to just kind of?
Are there any questions from the board on 413? I think we can move on to the next.
Okay. Uh, the next one is number 414. Uh, this is the mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. The purpose of this policy is to make clear the statutory requirements of school personnel to report suspected child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. And so this is, uh, simply a, a policy regarding what it is, the mandated reporting responsibilities of, uh, employees within the district. Employees do receive annual training on their responsibilities as a mandated reporter. And there's also a form that goes with this one. The form is simply a copy of the Minnesota Department of Education reporting form. The Department of Education accepts this form in written form or in digital form as completed online. And just to note for the board that, uh, when school employees report, uh, potential child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, um, they typically report it to the county, um, and so the child protection receives that, that report. However, in the case of when it is alleged that the perpetrator is a school employee, uh, there would be two entities that are reported to, one would be the county and the second would be the Minnesota Department of Education, thus the, the form that is attached to this from MD. Any questions from the board on, um, policy 414?
Any questions? Okay, moving on.
Next one is 415, very similar to 414, however, this one is mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. The purpose of this policy is to make clear the statutory requirements of school personnel to report suspected maltreatment of vulnerable adults. So while we are a school district that predominantly is dealing with minors, we do have vulnerable, vulnerable adults within our, um, within our school buildings for multiple reasons, whether they're students, employees, or community members. So, um, this policy would, is designed to, um, again, uh, spell out the practice and procedure for, uh, reporting possible maltreatment.
Is there any questions on this one? Okay, moving on.
Moving on to 514, this is the bullying prohibition policy. Um, a little bit longer preamble on this one that I'll share with the board. A safe and civil environment is needed for students to learn and attain high academic standards and to promote healthy human relationships. Bullying, like other violent or disruptive behavior, is conduct that interferes with a student's ability to learn and/or a teacher's ability to educate students in a safe environment. The school district cannot monitor the, the activities of students at all times and eliminate all incidents of bullying between students, particularly when students are not under the direct supervision of school personnel. However, to the extent such conduct affects the educational environment of the school district and the rights and welfare of its students, and is within the control of the school district and its normal operations, the school district intends to prevent bullying and to take action to investigate, respond to, and to remediate and discipline for those acts of bullying which have not been successfully prevented. The purpose of this policy is to assist the school district in its goal of preventing and responding to acts of bullying, intimidation, violence, reprisal, retaliation, and other similar disruptive and detrimental behavior. So within that, excuse me, a couple of things for the board to consider, one is we're focusing on bullying, uh, student to student within this policy. Uh, second, um, it's, while we acknowledge the fact that bullying, um, exists, we're also embedded in that preamble is the idea that the, the school district is taking proactive approaches, uh, so that bullying doesn't occur or it happens as minimally as possible. And then when it does occur, of course, we would follow through on the bullying prohibition Any questions from the board on the draft of 514?
Nope, thank you.
And then our final one for first read tonight is, uh, 522, Title IX Sex Non-Discrimination Policy Grievance Procedure and Process. General statement of policy for this one, the school district does not discriminate on the basis of sex and its education programs or activity and is required by Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972 and its implementing regulations not to discriminate in such a manner. Requirement not to discriminate in its educational program or activity extends to admission and employment. The school district is committed to maintaining an education and work environment that is free from discrimination based on sex, including sexual harassment. The bulk of, uh, as we discussed in our policy committee meeting, uh, this, uh, policy is essentially the practice and procedure that is spelled out by the federal government in terms of, uh, defining and then acting on Title IX complaints. Any questions from the board on this draft policy at all?
I think the second half of that sentence is, and we don't have a lot of freedom to make changes to it. Um, it's, the language is prescribed at the federal level, so.
I should, the same goes for our, our two policies, uh, unmandated reporting, 414 and 415. We don't have a lot of leeway in those policies as well.
Exactly. Any additional comments or discussion from the board? Policy 522. Okay, thank you. Moving on.
And so no action is needed on those, uh, tonight because those are first readings. However, recommended action to this evening is on policy 509. This is the second reading of policy 509. The purpose of policy, um, policy 509 is the enrollment of non-resident students, and the purpose of, uh, policy 509 is the district is required to participate in the open option enrollment, excuse me, the enrollment options program established by Minnesota Statute, Section 124D.03. It is the purpose of this policy to set forth the application and exclusion procedures used by the school district in making said determination. Um, and just to summarize, uh, a bit of previous conversations, either at policy committee meetings or at work sessions, um, so the school district is required by state law to have this policy and to allow for open enrollment. The school district would choose to close open enrollment at grade level or in its entirety. Uh, the board is responsible to follow the state statute, um, regarding this in terms of timeline and communication. So at this time, uh, my understanding is that the board, uh, has really not, uh, made any significant amendment to this at all at this time, choosing to monitor our open enrollment process and numbers, consideration of, on this policy.
Is there any discussion by the board? We had a pretty good discussion about this at our last work session, so I think you summarized it pretty well. We're, at this point, we're just going to monitor the situation and not make any changes to, substantial changes to the procedure or the process. So this is an action item.
Omo.
By Casey Root.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jamie Seaborn. All those in favor of policy 509 as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Daniker. Filing that our agenda is complete, um, we are adjourned at 6 o'clock and will be, uh, taking just a brief five or 10-minute break as we move the tables and move into our work session. Thank you all very much.[1717.78]